Called to be in the order of stamping, I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Brewer, here.
Here.
Trustee Carter.
Here.
Trustee Grant.
Here.
Trustee Tate.
Here.
Trustee Todd.
Here.
Here.
I have a number four, approval of the minutes, I'll accept the motion. Um, motion, I'm sorry, motion to approve the minutes for the special meeting for August 6th, 2018, I'll accept the motion to approve.
Mayor, I make a motion with two minor adjustments that I'll hand over to the clerk later.
Do you want to interim into, um, you can bring them up?
Sure. Sure, if everybody would like to hear them, on the first page, under the first communications billing increase, where there's a reference to the seventy-seven dollars and eighty-two cent cost differential, that amount that was eaten by First Communications was not a monthly increase, it was a one-time increase in cost, so I was asking that monthly be stricken from there. The other difference or change that I was requesting was that the meeting adjourned at 9:14 PM, lot 1005 PM.
Those are the necessary corrections?
Those are the only two I had.
Okay, do I have a second on that motion?
That's it.
I was moved by trustee Zupan, and second by trustee Carter, with the necessary corrections.
Comment, yes, in terms of that seventy-seven dollars that I stated was a monthly increase, I would like to clarify and confirm that with the company, because I remember the contract that I read and the contract that was presented to the mayor, as we talked about a monthly increase of seventy-seven. If it is a one-time, I will happy, I will be happy to correct the minutes, but if not, they will stand as presented.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, I actually, when I looked at my notes and saw the discrepancy, I went back and checked the video, and the video that I saw backed up my notes, but please feel free to check. I can't imagine that they would accept and they would eat a monthly ongoing difference, because then then they would want us to pay that seventy-seven a month, because that adds up.
Any other question?
I got comment. On this particular, for all the six minutes, I noticed on here on page, I guess this is page three, the mayor responds to the comments, however, he starts, he responds to one comment here, however, you got three or four different areas, but he only responded to one, so it seems like it's incomplete, just, just observation, it seems like the comments were incomplete, because if you go back above, if you go back above, it says, comments, you have comments from one, two, three, four, five, six people, but you only have response from the mayor, which is only one, so we need to, you know, not look like you're not responding to everybody. Have something to add comments for everybody.
Okay, so you're saying that six people, which, let me hear, responded, but only responded to one?
You don't even respond to one, I said, responses to the comments, and it's only one, I hear.
Usually if there's something that I don't respond to, it's probably something social media, a personal.
Well, it should, it should be noted in the comments. I, I do believe the mayor said he don't respond to social media, he only said so. I'm, I'm just, that's my comment.
Okay, we're not going, we're not going to debate this part, if you feel that what you're saying is not in there, then you can have the right to vote against the minutes, but if we're going to go back and forth, I don't know when the clerk, I think she distributed this Friday, on Sunday, okay, so you have one day, Monday and Tuesday. But we're not going to debate it back, back right now, but this is duly noted. And the motion that's on the floor now is for the first two items, that, um, first two items that trustee Zupan put, and then your, that's what the motion was, now you have a question.
No.
Of the content of the, um,
No.
You have a question of the content of the minutes, so there, that would have to either be a different one, or you can vote this one down and vote that one, but we can't, I can't vote two separate entities that you're discussing. One has something to do with what was not said or wasn't put in, now you're saying the same, that was something else that was not said, so.
Listen, uh, my comment was that we, uh, there were six comments made by the public, okay, and there's only one comment made by the mayor, I'm saying that we should have five other comments included with the, uh, other comments, the mayor didn't just speak on one item, he spoke on all six of them. So I'm saying it should be included, I'm not trying to debate or anything, I'm just saying, if you're going to answer one person's question, you should have something, if the mayor didn't respond, put it in there, and the mayor didn't respond. Let's, you know, let's be fair and ethical about it, you know, that's, that's my comment.
Okay, well, the motion on the floor, what, what deal with that on the first? And I hope from now on that we can get these questions and concerns to the clerk before we have, you know, have a meeting, then you can, hopefully she can address them at that time, or at least bring them up to the board, and let us know exactly what she's changing, so if we can, I'll, I'll make sure that we can get these minutes to you a little quicker, hopefully by Friday that you have time to address that at the time that, that you get them, relevant, going back and forth. But right now, we have a motion on the floor to accept the minutes with the necessary corrections, and we have a second. Matter of question, please call up.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Trustee Carter.
Yes.
Trustee Grant. Trustee Tate. Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Zupan.
Yes.
Motion is carried. I'll accept the motion to approve the minutes for the committee meeting for November 6th, 2018, any questions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion again with a couple of minor changes again, unless somebody else has others that they'd like to also incorporate.
I do have one, the only one I have is the motion to reconvene, it said the meeting reconvene at eight, with all trustees present, is it, is it like eight o'clock on the dot, or is it eight oh one, eight oh two? Just want to make sure we clear there what time reconvene.
We don't have no agenda, we can't follow along.
Excuse me, I mean, we're not going to do blurred out, we don't have an agenda.
I have my agenda.
I'm not, I was not looking. I was not looking.
I just thought if you didn't know.
No, we're not, we're not going to do that, I'm sorry that we're not.
Thank you, thank you all.
Um, you, what, what, what was that again trustee, that you said that was?
Uh, the motion to reconvene out of elected session.
Okay.
I wasn't sure what it says, it just says eight, I'm like, that's eight o'clock on the dot, now eight-ten, eight-twelve, whatever. Just wanted to make sure that we cleared that up.
Any other concerns or questions?
So I do have four changes. On page three, under Joe Wizewati's Points of Business, the first bullet point, the last sentence under that first bullet point drops off. You'll notice that last sentence drops off, it should say at the next board meeting, so it should just have the words "next board meeting" added. On page four, the next page, under Public Comments, you'll notice there's question marks there, mentioned an illness noted by a friend, I do have the details from my notes, while I don't have the woman's name, I do have a little bit more detail around what she was actually speaking about, that I could give to the clerk for addition to the notes. On page five, under trustee Brewer, it's TIFs two and three, not three and three, and then lastly, adjournment was at 9:26 PM, so that's the last of my changes. So I would make a motion that we approve the minutes with the five changes then, my four and trustee Grant's one.
Are yours written down?
Yes.
Any other questions? Matter of, second.
Second.
It was moved by trustee Zupan, second by trustee Brewer. The minutes be approved with the necessary corrections, which were, which I put in writing. Matter of clerk, please call up.
Trustee Carter.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Tate.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Zupan.
Yes.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Motion is carried. Public comment, all questions and comments will be directed to the mayor. Each speaker may comment on any matter pertaining to the business of Sawgill Village. Each speaker is allowed one opportunity to speak up for three minutes, and may not engage in debate or common discussion, and I will ask for all questions at the end, after you get through, at the end of the presentation of the comments. Please state your name and.
Charles Pond Dexter, two-year resident of Sawgill Village, I'm also the president of Deer Creek Homeowners Association. I'm here to thank Public Works Director Kevin Weller for his prompt action, we had a burglary in Deer Creek where the house was vacant, but the owner was, lived in New Orleans, he made a call to Kevin, and Kevin came over and installed a new meter where the burgess took all the copper out of the basement, I mean, for twenty-four hours Kevin was there. And I want to thank you to have the owner, Kevin, thank you very much.
Judy Cast here, a few meetings ago, I spoke about FOIA requests, and I talked about a FOIA request that is, according to my answer from the village, would it, would be very costly, because it had to be manually done. And I found that that's not a true statement, that it hasn't been manually done since the late seventies or early eighties, that it could be done electronically, which the letter said it could not be. In talking to the state's attorney, he suggested that I ask for you to check back and see if that was a mistake. I brought it up at that time, and yet I've heard nothing yet, and I would like to know what's going on. Also, the FOIA requests, I asked, who's doing them? Derek, you said you are the FOIA person, you're the man. And I asked that question for a reason, because I don't understand why other people are answering the letters and sending responses to the state's attorney. I also have an issue with your new members of the front office. I came in with a FOIA, I had it in my hand, you had one lady at the first window, one lady at the second window. The lady at the first window was talking, apparently it was business, I got in line behind the man in the second window. The lady finally looked up and said, oh, he's not here for business. When I walked up to her, she looked at me like I had two heads and told me, the next window, please. So I went to the next window and I waited for the lady to get off the phone. When she did, she was very polite, asked me what I wanted. I showed her my FOIA and told her I have a copy here, I need it time stamped and dated and your initials. She picked, took the paperwork, got up, went directly to your secretary, and they were standing there reading my FOIA. I don't do FOIAs for your staff to read. You said you were the FOIA person, I expected it to be copied and taken to you or put in your mailbox. What's going on with the FOIAs is nobody else's business unless we decide to bring it up right here. And I do not appreciate the staff having personal business at the window, laughing and talking to a gentleman, and tell you to go to the next window when the other lady's busy in business. And I understand we're losing another member in the front office, and I, that's, that's really a crying shame, because everything was put on her shoulders, and these people don't know what they're doing.
Good evening, my name is Claudette Bullock. When I received the notice to clean and rake the leaves and I got the leaf removal schedule, I immediately raked my leaves and got them out. Today I called to ask when my leaves would be removed, they told me that that program was over. No one came down my street, it looks like slum on that street with all those leaves on Peterson Avenue. I was wondering when can we get that taken care of?
Heidi Parker, this is not what I'm here for, but I think I want to mention it, last lady mentioned it. Public Works came through on a Friday, our garbage pickup day is on Thursday, on Fridays there were cars parked on the street, they could not clear in front of our house and the house next door. I really would like to have those leaves removed, it looks terrible. My real question is, to you, uh, mayor, on item eleven D, on the tax levy, are you just putting in for the regular taxes, or you adding additional taxes to that? On item D, could you please explain the resolution? And I really think it's a good idea and respectful for you to answer each individual as they submit their questions would reconsider that policy, thank you.
Linda Washington, first of all, I would just like to say to everyone in the building, I hope everybody's having a wonderful night, because I really am having a wonderful night. I'm having a wonderful night, you may say, well, why is she so happy tonight? Because I have talked to so many residents today, which is Tuesday, yesterday, Monday, Sunday, Saturday, throughout the village, and I would just like to ask all of the elected officials and the residents that's in the audience, all of you that's sitting out here in the audience, if you would just take an hour out of your busy week and get in your vehicle and drive through this village for just one hour, I'm gonna come back next Tuesday, and then I'm gonna have the rest of my statement. But if every resident would just get in your vehicle, especially the elected officials, if you would just drive through, just drive through Deer Creek, come out, go drive through Lincoln Meadows, go drive down Peterson, come back up Carroll, drive all the way down Yates, go to Brookwood, go to Weatherstone, go drive around to Carlisle Estates, go drive around in Candlelight, drive around into Carolinas, go around all the schools, Wagner, Strasburg, Rickover, all of the elected officials and the residents, I'm asking you, at nighttime, look at the lights up in the blocks when you drive, look at all of the blocks that have absolutely no lights, look at all of the residents who have all of this garbage, who have moved in their front yard, garages, I sat in front of a school today and looked across the street at a house, I could not believe people literally live in that house, I'm not gonna even say what street it's on, but I'm just praying for Sawgill Village and praying for elected officials, and I wish you all would just make that a part of your due diligence. Residents, as far as elected officials, just drive through your village and look around at where we live in our community, the village of Sawgill Village, that's made up of municipality, churches, and schools. Thank you.
Debbie Williams, good evening, um, this has been stated so many times, but I don't think we ever got an explanation. Every account's payable, there's seventeen hundred dollars on here for Dr. Slott. Now, Max Stradler, I'm sorry, do we have police negotiations every week? Because she gets paid eight hundred and fifty dollars every week, and I don't think we've missed an accounts payable where she didn't get paid for police negotiations. Now, when I used to be clerk, we had police negotiations maybe once a month, two or three times in a month, maybe one month, and then not again for the next two months, but it seems to me like we have police negotiations every week, at least we do according to the accounts payable, so I'm a little confused, can we justify that? Because I heard that it's probably going into arbitration, so are they actually meeting every month? That's my question, and I know a lot of people have asked this question, but I don't think I've gotten an answer yet, I don't think any of us have, so my question is, we see this on every accounts payable, eight hundred and fifty dollars every week, how often are the negotiations, are they really meeting once a week? And they still haven't come up with anything, because if we're paying her eight hundred and fifty dollars a week, who else are we paying while we're negotiating, we could be paying our police officers, thank you.
Mary Escovedo, I'm here again to talk about social media, I know you don't want to hear it, and mine isn't a question, mine is just a statement, so at the end, when you're pretending you're answering questions, you don't need to say I don't talk about social media, because you refuse to fix the problem, because you keep saying that you have no control over your family or your employees. But yet you feel that you have control over the citizens by telling them they can't come up and talk to social media. Well, you're wrong, and obviously, you don't listen to yourself when you talk, when you sit up here and tell the residents they can't talk about social media, and then you tell us that you can't control your employees. You sound a little bit like you're not all there, but that's it, that's my comment, I'll be here every week talking about social media, because it's wrong, you were given an ordinance, that ordinance should have been taken seriously, and for all your board members as well, that's all I have to say for today, thank you.
Pet Couch, I'm here again to talk about wild dogs running loose in our village. This has been brought up numerous times, we need a dog catcher, or we need somebody that has a vehicle that they can come out and pick up these dogs. Since I was here last week, that same dog, believe it or not, was on my porch after me, and I'm having my baseball bat, believe me, but if it got me, nobody'd find me till the next day. But that dog was loose four times since last week. The chief isn't here, I know he's quite busy, but I had discussion with him last week, I assumed that Cook County was gonna come and relieve that problem, but they haven't been there yet, but that dog is vicious. Now, when that dog was on my porch at eleven twenty-two PM, and I had just gone out on my porch and turned my porch lights off, because I have Christmas lights on my porch, if I'd been just a few minutes later, they probably wouldn't have found me till morning, because nobody would know I'd be laying out there. That bothers me, and how many other dogs are running loose in our town? Do they have licenses, do they have the rabies shots? But we don't have anybody to check on them. The other issue that I brought up last week, I've been by there now several times this week, that house still has a beautiful blue tarp that separates the two neighbors. It's got a beautiful blue tarp that is their fence. Now, I don't know why they would put a blue tarp up there, another color would have been less noticeable, but they are running some kind of a business with all the cars that are up on Jack's, which they are still, there's a minimum four to five cars parked in that driveway. Now, the kids are running around there after school, and when they come by that house, who's to say that if they're out there with those cars, somebody could get hurt seriously? So that's just another issue that hasn't been dealt with since last week.
All right, um, we just started with some of this. Appreciate the comment from the gentleman, as far as thanking our Public Works Director for his prompt attention, I'm sure that, um, you know, it's, and I appreciate that, because he does try hard, even though a lot of people see that we're not, or they feel that we're not doing anything. As far as the FOIA is concerned, I have passed that duties on, I have a person that took the class, has a certificate, so therefore, at this point, I will not be doing it, I was doing it because it was thrust on me at the time rather than not do anything, I had to take, I had to take that and take care of that, so your FOIAs will be answered by a person now that's got the credentials, which I never took the class. But I tried to answer as many FOIAs as I possibly, I'd answer them all. As far as being electronically taken care of, I mean, if we have it in paper form, as far as electronically being, being done, I have to look into whatever that FOIA was to see if it can be done electronically, but if we gather information and just go for all the FOIAs, and we gather information and we have it in paper form, we don't have the time to take that, scan it, and then put it into a, a drive, because we have so many different FOIAs that we have to take care of, so I would need a full-time person just to take care of the FOIA, so I try to have them available, and you will get an answer, they will be available, if they're available in paper form, come up and pick them up, sign for them, and you can take them, so it's not that they're not being done, but it may not be in the form that you wanted, and if you want to change that, then you can take them and scan them and put them into electronic form if you want to do that. I'm sorry to hear that you feel, or someone feels that the front office people are being disrespectful. I will address that question, that issue, because I don't want to hear that people are being disrespectful when residents come up and try to do business. So that's the first I've heard, that the front office personnel was being disrespectful to someone, so that part I will address, and hopefully, if it happens again, please come and tell me, and let me know about it, because that's something I take at heart, because they're here to serve the residents of the village. As far as the leaves are concerned, the program is over, and I'm sorry to hear that that didn't, um, down Peterson Street was not included in that, however, um, you know, I, I will talk to the powers that be, people that are responsible to see if anything can be done, I'm not. I'm not sure how far down Peterson Avenue. I do drive around and, um, kind of look at what's going on. So I will address that issue, uh, very, very soon. And then I guess cars were parked on the street at a, um, garbage day. Okay. And you're saying that the, um, leads were still there again. I will look at that, because if the leads were there, they, they should have been picked up the day, or by the, by the, um, deadline. If leads were put out after the deadline, then, then they're yours, they're yours to be taken care of. We have a deadline, that's why we have a deadline, that the leads will be out at that particular time. If they're not out, do you want me to continue? Or do you want to just? But we're not gonna go miss, miss parking. I mean, I've said it many times, I'm not gonna go back. Why would I give you that opportunity? As far as the tax levy question, I will explain the tax levy. At the time, when we have the, um, presentation or explanation, and also the resolution, um, we did go over the tax levies last, uh, committee meeting, and I thought everyone was kind of, uh, understanding with that. Uh, but I will explain it again, um, tonight, and, um, about the tax levy. And I'll also explain, I don't know where someone got that there's gonna be new taxes, but I'm not, I, I don't understand that part that there are no new taxes. As a matter of fact, it's gonna be some tax cuts. Um, accounts payable? It's amazing that before I became mayor, our law bills were five, six hundred thousand dollars a year. Yes, I was upset. Yes, I used to talk about it every, every time we had one. I found out that some of that was things that the lawyers were doing. Part of that was from, um, negotiations. Our last negotiation that we had with the police department cost the village a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, just for negotiation. Not nothing else, just negotiation for the police department. Does the, uh, person that's doing negotiations, we have two, no, I'm sorry. We have three different things going on right now. Uh, two of them are negotiation. One of them is a lawsuit that's in, that, that's, that's going through right now. And yes, that's for ten hours a week. And I saw someone put it in ten hours a day. No one negotiates ten hours. I'm not even here ten hours a day. So if that was ten hours a day, that would be ten times, that'd be fifty hours a week just for just that. It's ten hours a week. And a lot of times, work is being done from home because a question is being asked. So if they feel that that's inadequate, like I stated before, our lawyer bills used to be six and seven hundred thousand dollars a year. I don't think we even gonna make two hundred thousand this year. And I'm still trying to bring that down. So to say that we're spending all this money, we're not spending nowhere near. Because they've had, had a, hired a lawyer to do our negotiations. Yes, lawyer's gonna get involved at the end when most of the stuff is taken care of, because a lawyer has to get involved. But to ask the lawyer at every turn, how much, you know, what do we need? Can you do this? Can you do that? I, if I can get a person for half the amount to negotiate and get everything taken care of, they're presented to the lawyers that they're gonna charge anyway. But to have them here all the time, have them here asking questions on the phone, that's where a lot of money was ran up at that particular time. And I don't feel that we need to do that, but we need to have someone on top of what's going on with the negotiation, because as you can see, we have things that are going on, and they're still stalled, negotiation. And that's all I'm gonna talk about. I'm not gonna expunge on the, um, what's, what's happening in the negotiation, because it's still in negotiations. Um, the wild dog situation, I will bring it back up to the, um, chief. And as far as code, as far as the house, uh, code has told me, and I'm sorry, I don't know, I'm surprised no one got back with you about that, but that has been addressed. And that's all I'm gonna say about that part of it. But that, but that particular house that has the blue tarp on it, that particular problem has been addressed. Okay, that being said, I'm going to item number six, the mayor's report. Have a couple of items. Um, first of all, we have a, um, a proposal. I only got one. And, uh, this is from Robinson Engineering for the rail, the railroad spur that was being funded by the, by the government. Three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, I think it is. Three fifty, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And, um, we have, this bid has been obviously sent it through SSMMA, sent it through IML, in their, um, um, coffers, to ask for anybody that would like to bid on this particular contract, to get the work done. In order to move with this project, in order to get the project, you have to have the due diligence of a engineering company to look at the rail spur. And that's what the money that we got a grant for would be used for, to pay to get this particular study done. Once that study is done, you have it in hand now, is what they call shovel-ready. And if somebody wants to come into the village and do business in the village and, and put a, and, um, be part of a rail spur, everything else has been taken care of, because through this grant, the, um, engineering work was, um, has been, um, addressed and taken care of. Yes, it is expensive. And, but that has, that has to be done. So we were lucky enough and, and, and due diligent enough to get this three hundred and sixty thousand, sixty-five thousand.
Three hundred and fifty plus.
Oh, I'm sorry, three hundred and fifty plus thousand dollars, um, to get this done. And then now, once we have this done, it's gonna take a while to do it. Anybody wants to come in, any business wants to come in, has already, has this taken care of and didn't see in, which is the railroad that, that works off that spur would be the one that they would go to. But the work is done, and then quite naturally, to put the spur in itself, it'll be a few million dollars. But if they're willing to do that for a business, the business is willing to come in, and, um, a lot of it happened, and this, at least this particular part of it will be taken care of. So at this time, I will, um, open up the, um, I will open up the bid. This has been, this date's set December eleventh, that's today at three twenty-four, um, PM. And this is the only one. Don't ask me why, but this is the only, um, particular bid that was brought into the village. This was something that we talked about about a month and a half.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, just to let you know and to let the board know that this is not an actual bid. This is a request for, um, basically, information from the engineer. Uh, for qualifications, it's an RFQ. So the, the qualifications are, for the engineering firm are in there, as well as a outline for the, uh, proposed work to be done. So there's no actual amounts bid, it's just for informational purposes. So, um, a- as it said in the original, uh, RFQ, RFI that we put out, um, we'll go ahead and go through those, or actually, just go through that one, um, that was submitted. And if it's, um, it meets the criteria, um, we will recommend to you this as well, and we'll be making a recommendation.
Okay, so then all, only thing we're doing is just opening this up?
You just, if you would, just announce for the record that there was only one, uh, one received from Robinson Engineering, and that should suffice.
Okay, yes, this is from Robinson Engineering. Um... Okay, yes, this is the Phase One Engineering Study and Services. Are these supposed to, each one of these separate?
No, there's actually three separate. I requested three separate. One of the, that comes from the village and one for the record.
Okay, um... Oh, it's three sets? Okay, all right. Then these will go on record down, down. I'll present this to you, and then when you get through, we need to present it back to the board, so they can, uh, kind of review it before we go into further. Okay. Um, the next issue that we have is a, um, there was a roundtable discussion last Sunday, December the second, at, um, and we were fortunate enough to have it here in the village. It was at Grace United Church of Christ. Reason for that being that there was a congressman that's in charge of Homeland Security happened to be here in town. It was attending the church, so Congresswoman Robin Kelly. And to have it at that, at this particular church, um, and, um, it was, I attended it, and our police chief did. It was very informative about, um, homeland security. We got to meet the guy that was going to be to represent the, um, US Congress for homeland security, Bernie Thompson. And, um, it was very informative. We started to ask some questions about some of the things that are unfunded mandates. And, um, as I stated before, it was a question and answer period. And it was, it was very, it was very informative. I mean, the last time we saw homeland security come to the village, I'm sure a lot, those that are here remember, when, when the water, um, I called it the water incident came about, they actually came out at that time. That was the last time we saw, I asked questions about that too. But I also asked questions about the unfunded mandates that we have, that are gonna be thrust upon us, and one of them being our radios. They're claiming that our radios that the police and fire use will be outdated within a year, and those radios are six thousand dollars each. So I'm asking to see if we can have, this is the state or the county or even the government can help us, um, try to give us some money, because they are the ones that mandated that these radios be upgraded. So we're, we're working with them to find out. I'm glad I was able to meet this particular person, our Congressman Thompson, and let him know firsthand, if you wanna know what we need, those are some of the things that we need the federal government to help us with. And that's one would be the radios that they're mandating that we take care of. Okay, that's all that I have. Um, Village Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of things that I would like to address to you. Um, one of them, which is quite exciting, I'll start with positives first. Um, on the back table, on the resource table, you will find the actual flyer to be distributed to the residents regarding the holiday cheer. What was presented before was the bag letter, asking you all to please come in, deposit money, uh, deposit food and/or money for, um, the Christmas cheer holiday bags. We are still collecting. However, we still need to get the word out so that our residents would know that on December the twenty-second, uh, they can come here from five to seven. We're planning a small social, and we'll be distributing the holiday food baskets. I'm very pleased to report that I sent a letter to Strack and Vantel in Cherville, and they responded yesterday by saying, "Well, if you come in by two o'clock, three o'clock today, we'll definitely make it worth your while." And they donated fifty bags of non-perishable goods. They weren't necessarily items that we had requested, you know, to make that meal, but you know, we thank them tremendously. And we would also like to thank, um, Director Joe Bisavati, because he jumped in the car and went and got them for us. Because I know that I would not have been able to do it, so I greatly appreciate it. But know that it's not too late for you to come in to assist, and it's not too late for you to bring canned goods, and it's not too late for you to bring donations, financial donations as well. I thank you for that. Now I wanna address, um, minutes. Because quite a few have some unrest where these minutes are concerned. And I think that maybe monthly, I will share with you for, as reminders, that minutes are a summary of what took place. I'm not going to talk about someone who came and told us about a girlfriend who went to the hospital because she thought she had lupus, but she didn't have lupus, she had something else. I'm not gonna write all of that in minutes, nor, I'm not going to do that. A summary of the fact that she talked about the illness that her girlfriend had is sufficient for minutes that deal with the village of Salk Village. Okay? Because we can't do anything about the child, the lady being in the hospital. Another thing, we all know that our mayor responds to public requests at the end now of all of the questions and answers. He does not answer all of them. And if he does not say, "I'm not going to answer or no report," then I'm not going to put it in the minutes. People, now come on now, let's be real. We're getting bogged down on some items that does not need for us to be bogged down on. If you look at that agenda, it is very robust. And we're here talking about six people commenting, but the mayor didn't make six comments. No, he does not make six comments all the time, if somebody makes six. Let's keep everything in perspective. Now, I have one more thing to say, and then I am going to give up the mic, even though I've never might, like, I've never met a mic that I didn't like. Um, trustees, I'm going to draw your attention to the resolution relative to the calendar for 2019. And please forgive me for the errors that I made on it. At the top of it, on the backside, I believe, instead of it saying 2019, it says 2018 at the very top, even though where the actual calendar is, it says 2019. This is a draft. All of your ordinances, resolutions, they're all drafts. By the time they're actually drafted, they are polished. They are together. You can trust me. So know that as you're voting on the calendar, it's for the 2019. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. That completes my report.
Village Engineer, uh, Mr. Jim Sarr.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one item. We have been exploring options for the culvert repair or replacement proposed for the 2019 MFT Road Reconstruction Program. We will be preparing cost estimates for this work to determine what the scope of the program will be to fit within the budget available. And that concludes my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Ms. Mayor, a comment or a question? What, what is the culvert, uh, repair replacement proposal? What is that? And what area is that? What, what is that?
There's a culvert, um, uh, two hundred and twenty-first? Two hundred and twenty-first, that's deteriorating. Uh, so it either needs to be repaired or replaced. It's a big storm pipe. The Lincoln Lansing Drain Stitch flows through it underneath the roadway.
That's it? Okay, Fire Department, Captain Denny Sennowich.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Over the period from November twenty-sixth through December fifth, Fire Department responded to sixteen calls. There were four fire alarms, three vehicle accidents, one ambulance assist, two box alarms, two CO alarms, three for wires down, uh, gas leak, and a dryer fire. Our pancake breakfast was a huge success. Children were able to sit up, stand, and laugh. Our parents and grandparents took pictures. Plan members were there to pass out books, and we thanked them for that. Uh, we wanna thank everyone for keeping, uh, for staying fire safety conscious and for helping us keep that re-thread. Uh, please check on your neighbors, especially during the cold weather. We'd like to wish everyone a safe and Merry Christmas, and a happy and prosperous year. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Public Works Director, Mr. Kevin Weller.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Uh, the last two weeks, we've had several water main breaks. Uh, eighteen thirty-six, two twenty-second place. We had two, nineteen thirty, two twenty-first, one, two twenty-first in Chappelle on the street. Uh, the main and the T at eighteen thirty-six were pitted and leaking very bad, so we had to order some parts. A few days later, left the hole open, dug it bigger, and we replaced the ma, a section of main, about eighteen feet, the T and the hydrant at that location. And the work, the final work will be dealt with in the spring, um, the driveway and the landscaping. Uh, and Mayor, you did... spring, the driveway and the landscaping. And Mayor, you did report that we are done on the leaf program. We actually have one day left. We got given one more day by the Scavenger Service. It'll be tomorrow, and it is for the section between Peterson and Jeffrey over there and that side over there. We didn't finish that whole section. And we have two piles on Torrance Avenue that have to be picked up. So that will be the completion. We will cruise around and check some areas that may have been passed, but everything had been gone through at least one time. We're trying to get through at least a couple more times, and some of the sections, it just didn't work out of the weather. And as the matter of the days of the week that we pick up, one day a week is garbage pickup, and we have almost a month of pickups for leaf program. We can't stay exactly on track. The dates for the garbage dates are to give us more time when there's nothing on the streets. We hope that residents don't park on the piles, but unfortunately, some of these extend past the date. It's not exactly day for day in each section. It doesn't work out that way. And leaves fall when they fall, so we have to wait for all that to happen. Staff has also been out putting up the new Christmas tree, and hopefully, some of the decorations we have, we're going to put up, but hopefully, within some of the money that we're going to hopefully receive here, we'll be able to purchase some new upgraded ornaments and a new crossing wreath, the Sauk Trail. That'll be down the line. We're still continuing small jobs at the Village Hall. The Fire Department got some heater issues at the Village Hall or the Public Works. At the Fire Department, we had an issue with some motion sensor eyes on their doors, which they took care of. We have some issues with plumbing at the Police Department, and they're all ongoing issues. And we also are cleaning up some of the locations, some of the buildings, some of the debris and some of the vacant rooms. Staff has also been out, so they will be out patching potholes the next few days and next week. If any resident does see anything in front of their house that we had passed, please call up to the Village Hall, and we'll get back as soon as possible. Staff is also, will be out picking up the large branches. Any piles, small piles of branches, we ask that you put into your garbage for the scavengers to pick up. They will take them all winter long, just in your garbage can, just put a few in there. But if they're bigger branches, we will have people out, and they will be picking up the bigger, larger branches. And there are a few trees that are laying in the parkway that we have not gotten yet, that will be picked up. The last item here is also, we had some members out on 223rd Street. Last couple of weeks, it's been a lot of garbage on 223rd Street, on Torrance Avenue, between Rickover School and 223rd Street, and then the Carolina Drive, which is by 394 by the highway. We're just asking neighbors if they see people throwing garbage out, please describe to them what they're losing. They're losing money out of their pocket every day, because they have to pay us to pick that up, and all they have to do is throw it in the garbage can. And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Sorry, but I'm going to jump on the bandwagon about the leaves, because Deer Creek was missed as well, because I've been out there looking at my leaf pile every day.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, I'd like to reiterate the comment I made to Kevin last week. I know you guys weren't here, but you guys did an outstanding job for 221st Street. We had the big water main breaks there, and a lot of the residents over there gave us a call, and what they did was call in neighbors. You know, they were very appreciative of you guys taking care of 221st Street. You did an outstanding job, and I can't say, not because I saw the results over there, and they said it was outstanding, you know. So it seemed like the neighbors worked with you guys and, you know, to get the word out, and it was like outstanding. It really was, and I really appreciate it.
Okay. Before we get to the last one, I forgot that the police chief did have a report, and I just want to put this into the record. I did mention some of these things, but the numbers need to be put into the record. And for the period of November 28th through December 11th, the Police Department received 518 calls for service. Police arrest summary during that same period, Sauk Village Police Department had a total of eight arrests. And then the people that were, I didn't take attendance, but obviously the chief did, that roundtable discussion that was held on the 2nd of December at Grace United, in attendance was the Congressman Bernie G. Thompson, who is the chairman, also State Representative Will Davis, Mayor Sheila Chalmers from Mattson, police chiefs from Dixmoor, Glenwood, Maywood, Park Forest, and Richmond Park. And then, like I said before, they touched on numerous subjects, availability of surplus equipment and government grants and immigration. I wanted to put that in for the record.
Mr. Mayor, were we invited, or?
No, I didn't even find out about it until the last minute.
That would have been really good.
As I stated, I didn't find out about it until the last minute. I was told, I was at that church, and they were told they were having a meeting right after, because the person that was in charge of Homeland Security happened to be here from Mississippi, visiting family, and Robin Kelly, I guess orchestrated it at the last minute, because it was supposed to go in Mattson. But it was the last minute, and I was, I was trying to call my chief to let him know to come, and he had found out about it in the last minute itself. So, like I said, I didn't even know. If I had known, yes, I would have loved, because it was very, very informative. I mean, but a lot of people from, obviously, the people that follow whoever Congresswoman Kelly, they came, and there was some, some people had some concerns about different things in immigration. There was a lot of concerns about immigration, so. But next time something like that happens, I'm hoping I get enough advance notice that I can let everybody know. Item number F, Economic Development Director, Joseph Wizardwatt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. The Board has before it an ordinance that was previously presented, which calls for an amendment to 14-24 of the Property Maintenance Code. The amendment was recommended by the Village Board's Ordinance Committee and calls for an increase from $50 to $75 for all reoccupancy applications. The Board previously discussed this ordinance. However, after discussion with Trustee Todd, we decided to delay the implementation of the fee to allow for proper notice to everyone. So therefore, the fee increase will become effective February 1st, 2019. The Board also has before it an ordinance amending the Village's stormwater management. We discussed this ordinance last week, and this brings the Village into conformity with the mandates of FEMA, which take effect in February of 2019 also. Staff and legal counsel recommend the Board approve the ordinance. The Board also has before it a resolution which supports the renewal of a Class 8 property tax incentive for 217-51 Jason Rasmuson Drive, which is owned by VHE2 Sauk LLC. This is the original WSI building on Mark Collins Drive, kind of going around. So when you go to that corner, it's the first building on your left there, way down. As we discussed, staff and legal counsel recommend the Board approve this resolution. I'd also like to take this opportunity to publicly wish the Mayor, Madam Clerk, members of the Board, and the residents, all my colleagues, a very Happy Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, joyous New Year ahead, as we won't be meeting here again until January 8th. Thank you.
Thank you.
Got a question. Joe, in this particular area that we're going to vote on tonight, and this is located in TIF 3?
The, for the Class 8 renewal, that is in TIF 3, yes, in the logistics center.
Offhand, just offhand, do you know how much, has the, any improvements to TIF 3 for this particular company, facility?
Well, the building is about, roughly about 700,000 square feet. It's currently, was vacant for a little bit of a time. It's currently occupied by Pratt Industries, which is a cardboard, paper manufacturing, recycling company. They're based out of Valparaiso, Indiana. This is one of their satellite office or locations, if you will. And then, it's also occupied, again, it was vacant, because if you remember, WSI moved and bought the property to the west over there, but now they're reoccupying that property because they've run out of space in their existing facility. So as far as improvements, it's been built, but it has been reoccupied.
Okay, but that's for the whole TIF, the 700 square feet. What improvements have?
No, that, I'm sorry.
For the Class 8, what, I mean, I'm looking for the application process, and they had to say they were doing something.
Right, so originally, originally that was a field, so when DP Partners made application and built that as a spec building, okay, they came here back in 2004 and put that building up. When they originally put that building up and planned that building out, it was just a spec building. So it sat empty for a number of years, as they paid taxes on it. So it sat vacant for a while until the VHE2 came in and purchased the building from DP Partners, and that's when the Class 8 actually took effect.
That was like 10 years ago.
That was in 2008.
So 2008, but I'm saying, this particular property hasn't had any improvement to that building since 2008? They haven't done anything since 2008?
I mean, I don't know if they've done anything additional. I would imagine that they have done improvements, because as the building became occupied, they would have had to have, you know, done build outs and whatnot within, in the inside of the building. So as far as the outside of the building, you know, it's a huge building.
So we don't, we don't know if there was any improvement made to, the warehouse specialty, I think that's what you call it. So we don't know, they got the break in the taxes, but we don't know what improvements are, if there has been any break in the taxes for warehouse specialties. Do you know that?
Well, the tax benefit does not go to the tenant. The tax benefit goes to the property owner.
So you're still not answering my question. Has there been any improvements to the warehouse specialty since 2008?
I think you're confused. I think the...
No, I'm not confused. I'm asking you a specific question. Has there been any improvement to the warehouse specialty since 2008?
Yes, they actually moved, moved to the property and purchased the property to the west, and now they reoccupied a portion of that property. So they moved out, and now they've rented the space that they moved out of again.
Okay, so when we get this particular property, the warehouse specialty, okay, so they're asking for a renewal of Class 8, okay, so therefore, they get like a 10% reduction in taxes or something like that?
Right, the actual, it's not a 10% reduction in taxes. It's probably more like a 60% reduction in taxes. When you factor it out, under the Class 8, the, it's, the actual assessed value that they go by, it goes from 25% down to the residential rate of 10%. And it's taxed at that same rate as a residential rate. So it's not like they're not paying taxes. They're paying a huge amount of taxes on that property.
Do you have any idea how much they're getting?
Probably about $700,000 is what they're paying.
For that particular building?
Yes.
I mean, for the warehouse specialty?
Yes.
They get $700,000 a year?
That's what they pay, roughly.
And that money, that money goes back into the TIF?
That's correct.
Okay, okay, nevermind, I'll leave it on that one.
If they didn't have that, they'd be paying about 1.7 million.
For this one particular?
That's correct.
Okay.
And frankly, they'd probably be in a different location, if not Indiana.
A year. Do we have anything that documents say?
Oh, like Cook County does.
Okay.
Yeah.
That concludes your report.
Yes, sir.
Reports of trustees and standing committees and comments. Public Service Committee, Trustee Bernice Brewer.
Again, I want to thank Kevin for outstanding job for the 221st Street water main breaks. Secondly, I'm sort of concerned, or it seems unbelievable that we would get $700,000 for, in property taxes for that particular area. It's, I don't know, it may be true, I don't know, but it sounds a little disconcerting to me. With that, only other thing I want to say again, I want to emphasize the point that Ms. Suffin, Dr. Strutter, and the lab group has not been brought before the boards for the advice and consent, and it's illegal, and I like to put that on the record here, and we need to address that issue. Also, again, with that operational transfer, we haven't got anything in writing addressing operational transfers. So with that said, that's the end of my report.
Budget and Finance Committee, Trustee Roger Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no report.
Housing and Government Relations Committee, Trustee Cecil Tate. Ordinance Review Committee, Trustee Linda Taub.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance Review Committee met in the beginning of December, and we're working on a 1050 billing ordinance, and right now it's at the attorney's. Once we get it back, we'll have our committee review it. We'll probably have to do a special meeting, because the Fire Department really wants to get this done, because we're limited on our meetings that we're having here for the Board. Once I get that back, hopefully it'll be on the agenda next week, and then I'm going to have, Danny Sinowitz will then present it to the committee on the whole, because he can explain this 1050 billing. And I just have a couple of comments. I see on our agenda, you have community outreach again, and I know I brought this up several times about our ordinance for the standing committees, and this is not part of our standing committee. So if it's not going to become part of the standing committee, it should not be under our standing committee on the agenda. So if you want to change that, if you want, you know, you can bring it before the ordinance review. We'll review it and add it to the standing committee. Also, I know we're getting ready to vote on the calendar, and I've suggested this several times, and then I let it go, and I'm going to bring it up again. I believe this Board should go down to two meetings a month. We would save the taxpayers money. There's times we really don't have a lot for the agenda. It would also give us time to research what we need to research. And that's my suggestion, to two meetings a month. You could do one committee on the whole, and then have a board meeting, the second Tuesday or whatever. The other thing that I'm going to bring up, and Mr. Mayor, could you please, because I do not want to put a FOIA in for this, I don't feel that I should, the email that was sent to HR about the employees, the background check, fingerprinting, I still don't have an answer. So I'd really like the answer by tomorrow, otherwise I'm going to be forced to submit a FOIA, which I don't feel that I should have to do. Also, who is the new FOIA officer?
Mary Clark.
Also, I had something, because I see that our finance director's not here. I realize there was an issue with the checks last week. I know we switched over to a new system, but I had received several phone calls that our employees were not notified that their stuff was not direct deposited, that there was an issue. So if there was return checks due to no direct deposit, is the Village going to reimburse or pay for those return check fees? I was not aware, I did not receive a memo about the checks. I normally just file my checks because I have direct deposit, and I was notified by the clerk that it was a live check. So I had to make sure that I took it to the bank and cashed it. But I really think that when you have issues like this, you really need to notify the employees immediately that there was an issue with there's no direct deposit. Now, do we need to fill out more things for direct deposit, because we were already set up on it? And that's the end of my comments.
Okay, as far as the payroll, I'm sure everyone got their payroll. It was the last minute item that I found out about that morning. That morning being that Friday morning, because I left Thursday, everything was supposed to go into direct deposit, so this particular time, we had a paper check. I was told that everybody that got, that was getting a paper check was informed through their department here. So I don't know, I don't know about the trustees being informed. I thought, and I assumed that the trustees were informed, but if they were not, I'm sorry, that's my fault. They were supposed to be informed that everyone would be getting a paper check that Friday morning, because the paper checks were delivered that Friday morning to the Village. As I stated before, I thought they were going to have a direct deposit be available, because it was being be available because, um, it was being worked on that week, and I was notified that it would be, um, taken care of that Friday morning, but obviously, as we could see, it wasn't. So between now and next pay period, it will be, uh, taken care of. I'm having meetings, and, um, it will be taken care of. So next pay period, everyone that gets the check will be getting their direct deposit, those that filled them all out. Um, I think there's a few that still, for some reason, wants a paper check. I'm not sure, but, um, no one did not not get paid. Everybody got paid, so, and they got paid at, that Friday, which is what payroll is. So, um, I don't, I'm sorry that you didn't get informed. I don't know if any other trustees didn't get informed, but it was told to inform everybody that Friday morning, that Friday morning being at eight o'clock. Okay. So I just, I don't, I thought, I thought everybody was informed, but I can't, um, um, you know, if you're saying it wasn't, I can't say that. I can't debate with you. Um, as far as the, um, the employee, um, background checks out. If you, if you're here tomorrow, please come in and, and we can discuss that, but I will not discuss that.
Actually, I won't be in, but I'd like it in writing. You can either email me, because I've emailed it, and I, I felt that Dr. Stroud should have the decency to email me back, because I've done it twice. So, you know, this is something I want to know, if it was done and what agency. That's all I'm asking, that it could be emailed, and it would not be shared with anyone. It's something that I want to know.
Okay. Like I said, I'll, I'll, then I'll make sure that, that, um, you get it in writing tomorrow.
Okay, thanks.
Senior Advisory Council, oh, I'm sorry, I missed you. Public Safety Committee trustee, uh, Bezulba.
As I mentioned last week, I'll mention it again tonight. The chief's not here tonight, but he and I have been talking about setting up monthly community meetings whereby we will be meeting in here with the police, uh, whether it's him or one of the officers or one of the sergeants, and the community. That will be happening, starting early in the new year, uh, and then changing gears to comments. Uh, you may have noticed as you came in this evening, unfortunately, uh, for me, uh, fortunately for them, the library's doing a little bit of reorganizing and, and is no longer able to collect the plastic bags for us. So you'll notice when you come in, there are now boxes at either entrance for the plastic bag collection, where we are trying to recycle and collect five hundred pounds worth of plastic bags. Those are the bags you get at Jewel, Target, Menards, Home Depot, all those lovely plastic bags. Uh, so instead of throwing them out, recycle them and bring them here, please. Just plastic bags, nothing else. Uh, and put them in those boxes. And when I collect five hundred pounds, we're going to get a free park bench out of it. So please bring those in here, and as those boxes fill up, I take them out and I collect them, and I stuff them into bigger bags, and I weigh them, and I collect big bags. And these guys are getting sick of me doing that because they're like, please, get your five hundred pounds and get your bench. So, uh, if you please would, you know, if you're not doing anything with your bags, bring them in here and put them in those boxes. And that ends my comments, and, and thank you.
Thank you. Um, community outreach, which I will be getting back with, um, trustee Carter about that, so, because we have to write a new resolution and bring it before the ordinance review committee, because the name was changed from arts and recs to community outreach. So that has to be taken care of, and we have to get that ordinance, um, res- I'm sorry, the resolution, um, written up and then, uh, presented, so we can make that change. But, uh, trustee Carter?
I understand. Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Reports of committees and commissions, senior advisory committee chairman, Mr. Emmett Farmer.
Thank you, Mayor and trustees. Just wanted to say we have a meeting on this Thursday, the thirteenth, the last meeting of the year for the senior advisory council, and all are welcome. Also, uh, I was contacted by Cedar, and hopefully they're going to be here on the eighteenth. Uh, I've yet to receive a flyer from, but hopefully I'll receive them this week. They're going to try to do the whole date in the senior center on the eighteenth. And on behalf of the senior advisory council, we just want to thank the mayor and all the trustees for all the support, uh, that they have given us this year, and just want to say Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Item number ten, it's under unfinished business. I will accept the motion for the ordinance amending section fourteen dash twenty-four, property maintenance code adopted in division one of article two, building and technical code of chapter fourteen, buildings and built, buildings and building regulations of the municipal code of the municipal salt village.
So moved.
No, that's the unfinished business. That's, that's yours.
I apologize.
That's your ordinance, right?
Yeah, I apologize.
So moved.
I go jumping ahead of the scene here.
It was moved, uh, by trustee, uh, Zuban, second by trustee Carter. Any questions?
Can you give us a brief, um?
You had, it was just explained by, uh, Mr. Whittwater.
I don't have the actual board.
Pardon me? You don't have it? We, we talked about it last week. No, no, we didn't talk about it like, about it a while back.
That's the one that's-
This the one that's going to, um, and, uh, raise the administration fee for inspection?
Oh, okay.
For fifty to seventy-five dollars.
Fifty to seventy-five.
Yeah, fifty to seventy-five. I got it.
Madam clerk, please call the robe.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Motion is carried. I'll accept the motion to approve the counts payable in the amount of- Oh, it's right here. In the amount of three hundred sixty-three thousand forty-four dollars two cents.
Say it.
Moved by trustee Carter, second by trustee, um, ma- man, it's gone. Trustee Grant. Any questions?
I just have a comment. We just received this today, which is unacceptable. Um, normally we have it on Friday, so we could go through it, and then if we have any questions, we could come in and talk about it. So I just want to make you aware of it, because this is unacceptable to receive it right before our meeting.
And I apologize for that, because, um, there were some other extenuating circumstances that we just talked about, and that was the reason why this was late. I did speak to the people involved, and they assured me this wouldn't happen anymore. So, um, hopefully we can get this done by Friday, not Sunday, by Friday before Business Day is out, that you can have these in your boxes by Friday. But we had some problems last, uh, week as we all just got to talking about, and that's why this was kind of late going out, and it's why it was just done today.
Good.
Any other question?
Come.
You finished? Oh, I'm sorry. I heard it. Listen. Anyway, uh, for the items on accounts receivable, again, I'd like to reiterate that employees are going to get paid regardless because they have the votes. However, it has to be brought, every time we do a count receiver, it should be brought to attention, that there are people on this payroll that's not, that's not here, not, uh, been voted on by the board, and it's illegal. That's the end of my comment.
Okay, for the record, trustee, this is a count payable.
This, I know what this is.
You said a count receivable.
A count payable. This is a count payable. And if you didn't understand, it's a count payable.
You said a count receivable.
Okay, whatever. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I don't argue with you, but I'm quite sure everybody understands that they're going to get paid.
Any other, any, any, any other questions?
Okay.
Madam clerk, please call.
Trustee Tate?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
No.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
No.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Motion is carried. I will entertain a motion for the ordinance amending the stormwater management of chapter twenty-six environment of the municipal code of the village of Salt Village, parentheses flood plain.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Zuban, second by trustee Carter. Any question?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, you guys gave us this ordinance, and it was supposed to be changed. I know at the last minute, this is a copy. In fact, I got it from the, uh, village clerk. But, uh, no changes were made. Uh, I understand that we're supposed to have a clean copy. I'm not, uh, comfortable with voting on this. We don't have, uh, everything's lined it out, blacked out, is just what they're saying. And, um, I, you know, it's, it's just not acceptable. This, this putting anything in front of us, expect us to vote on it. It, it doesn't, because there was time, and I don't see the rush, for them to make changes, like we promised last week. Uh, the information that was promised to the, uh, trustees should be what we have here to vote on. And this is, copy right now has all live through and all this stuff. It doesn't make any sense. So, uh, we need a, a clean copy, the right copy.
Any other questions?
Just a comment. I don't disagree with them.
Mr., Mr. Mayor?
Any other, any other comments? Madam clerk, please call the robe.
I think you hear a comment.
Who?
Joseph.
Is it pertaining to this?
Yes.
Will it change the vote? That's what I'm-
I, I just want to explain the, the, what the corporate council did when they made the amendment to the ordinance. Um, historically, Odelson and Stirk has provided the board with lined copies, which actually shows what's been amended or removed from the ordinance. And it also, uh, is to help for the codification process. So that's why they, they do it that way, so the board understands what's being changed, um, when they're amending an ordinance. Um, historically, they've done it this way for a number of years. So when they do an amendment, the, the language is stricken, and new language is also added, which is underlined as well. So that's the rationale as to why it's done that way. Um, it helps for the codification process. When the, um, codifiers are going through there to see what's actually changed in the text, they know what's been removed, they know what's been added. So that's why they did it that way. And that, that way, the board actually knows what's going on too.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
No.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Resolution requesting the Cook County clerk to apply for an elevated loss and cost factor to the two thousand eighteen levies, the village of Salt Village, Willing, Cook County. Um, this particular ordinance was explained last week. What it is, is every time we levy for taxes, the county doesn't give us our full amount that we levy for. They always take away at least ten percent. So what we're doing is asking for that ten percent to be zero loss for our cost factor.
Mayor, did you skip on?
Oh, I sure did. Yes, I did. Um, but I'll explain this one, and then I'm gonna, and I might as well explain both of them. But this one is the one that I just got to talking about. But prior to that is the actual levy itself. And as we discussed last week, and this is the one that we, that I skipped, but, um, okay, I can, um, let me go back and ask for a motion for the, one for the actual levy, which is item number C. And we'll do D second. I'll ask for a motion to accept the, um, levy, but before that, I just wanted to go over some things, because there was some things mentioned about any new taxes. As you can see, on, um, the, that you have in front of you, the, um, perspective that's here in front of you, the proposed levy this year, um, with, uh, with our bonds is two million six hundred twenty-six thousand fifty dollars. That represents a seven hundred and thirty thousand dollar change decrease, or twenty-one point eight percent decrease of change in your property taxes. So depending on where you live in the village, it goes somewhere between four hundred dollars a year to eighty-two dollars a year, that you will see a savings on your property taxes starting next year. So we, um, we're, we're doing that now. I'm not saying that we're going to, it's going to stay that way, but right now, your next year's taxes will be reduced by that amount of money from the village. Now, real reiterate, from the village. We have three taxing bodies in the village. This is just the one that we're, we're going to reduce. I cannot do anything about anyone else's taxing body, but we're going to reduce it by twenty-one percent. So your taxes will go down, again, according to where you live and how much you pay for taxes. It'll range from four hundred dollars a year to, um, eighty-two dollars a year. So that's the first time since I've been here, and I lived out here, that my tax actually went down. So with that being said, I'll accept a motion to, for the ordinance, for the levy of assessment taxes for the year twenty eighteen for the village of Salt Village, counties, and Cook.
So moved.
I got a question. Do we know what the taxes were? I'm sorry. Already?
No.
Okay.
I, I move it.
And you say? Okay, it was moved by trustee Grant, second by trustee Carter. Now, do you have a question?
Uh, what was the, do you recall how much the taxes were from last year?
Last year's taxes-
You're going to let me, how much we're going to levy last year?
Last year's taxes. Did you get that? Last year's taxes were three million three hundred fifty-six thousand one hundred and seventy-three dollars. That was fiscal year two thousand seventeen, because your taxes are always a year behind. So when you pay taxes next year, it'll be based on this year. So that's how much taxes were the last time we, we, uh, had taxes. The new proposed would be two million six hundred twenty-six thousand and fifty dollars. Any other questions? Madam clerk?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
I'm staying.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Yes.
Motion is carried. I don't under, I mean, your taxes. Um, ne- next one, I, I also, I have a hasty to say, uh, I brought it up, is about the lost amount that we, uh, would normally lose, or we're trying to apply for that ten percent. And I'll accept a motion for that ordinance, for the levy and assessment, um, of those taxes, for the loss, um, it's called the loss and cost factor to the two thousand eighteen tax levy for the village of Salt Village, Cook and Willing County.
So moved.
Any questions? Madam clerk?
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Yes.
And trustee Todd?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Resolution of the village of Salt Village, Willing, Cook County authorizing a renewal of the class eight tax incentive for the property commonly known as, um, Jason Vasmuzon Drive, um, pin number number thirty-two dash twenty-six dash two oh one dash zero one one dash zero zero zero, and pin number thirty-two dash twenty-six dash one oh three dash zero zero one dash zero zero zero. I'll accept the motion.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Grant, and second by trustee Zuban. Any questions? Madam clerk?
Trustee Brewer?
No.
Trustee Carter?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Yes.
Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Item F, I'm going to, um, wait on, remove that until we get, after we get everything, um, taken care of, and we can bring it back up on the next meeting, the meeting- um, taken care of and we can bring it back up on the next meeting, the meeting of the whole next week on the eighteenth. Um, so we'll have all that taken care of at that time. Um, we can bring it up and discuss it. There was a few things brought up about that. Um, and you already know there won't be a meeting after next week until the eighth of January. So Christmas and New Year's happens the following Tuesday this year and next year. So next week will be the last meeting we have in, um, for this, for this particular year. So just want to let everyone know that. I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by trustee, um, Zuban, second by trustee Carter. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.